I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll have the invocation by Mr. Douglas and the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Van Meter.
But Mr. Douglas is not in it.
I'm sorry.
You're going to have to get a backup plan.
Oh.
Oh, there he is.
Okay.
Let's do it. Bow your heads and pray with us. Thank you for training all of us safe travels. Guidance for both of us. Our Lord today. Uh, we have our thoughts and prayers fixated on Reminder, Apalachian High School. Pray that, uh, victims there, families cover. Pray all those who help would receive it. Praise it to those.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we do have a quorum. We're just missing, um, Ryan Cato from District. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
A good.
All in favor? Vances, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? All in favor? Before we begin tonight, I'd like Kentucky Momma to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommended body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain a request to speak for them. Any request with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of the request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Ms. Mr.
Yes, sir. This is S one plan revision. This was postponed from the June sixth Planning Commission. It's on thirty-five ninety-two Evans to Locks Road on one point zero nine acres. Current zoning is S one special for a church, and the request is a major revision to allow a new church building and gravel parking. This is the location, which is on the south side of Evans to Locks Road. This is a zoning map, which is the R two zoning across Evans to Lock is mostly R one zoning. And this is the aerial of the current property showing the existing building, and there is a grave site behind the building, which is about sixty grave sites. This is the street view of the, of the Evans to Locks Road, and there is a small sign for the church there. From the other angle, you can see that the sign is actually on the residential property, but it's been there for many years. Close up of the prop, of close up of the aerial. Um, this was the aerial that was done before the existing building was demolished. You can see a picture of there of the brick building. The church had been there since about nineteen hundred, and the zoning was approved to S one in two thousand. The, the new building was built to the side of the existing building, and then the existing building was demolished. Site photograph showing where the old, old church building was, and the proposal is to put the new building in its place. These are views from the property looking at the adjacent residential homes at thirty-five seventy-two Carnoustie and thirty-five sixty-eight Carnoustie Drive. This is the existing building that's out there, and the Westlake Maintenance Sheds are to the right-hand side of this view. They also share the driveway and some parking spaces as well. This is a plot of the, the property that shows where the original building was. And this is the two thousand approved plan that showed the replacement of that building. And the development plan that we had in June showed the existing building staying there and the new building here with the parking area to this side. The shared driveway comes off Evans to Locks Road. It's an easement to this property, and there is a driveway that goes behind onto the Westlake property right here. Their sheds are here and here, and that is shared between those two property owners. This is the building plan of the new church building. And renderings as well. Close up of the rendering. The church has been working on the deficiencies of the site plan. Most of this is derived from the fact that the site is obviously limited size. And with engineering, certain things are reviewed as part of our zoning and plan review, which is driveways, parking, vehicle access, fire access, stormwater management, buffers, et cetera. So this plan was received yesterday, and the church has shown some changes in there. Um, the fire access turnaround couldn't work in this part here, so the, this plan shows a fire lane going this way, and that will link on to the Westlake property. Uh, the parking has been revised in this layout to make a realistic parking counterfeit there. Um, there's still some deficiencies with the plan, and without a full survey and some professional engineering advice, it's hard to for staff to see that this plan will actually work technically if the zoning was approved. Um, and staff is recommending postponing to cover the deficiencies.
Thank you. Anybody from Clark Road Baptist Church like to come forward and speak in favor of this major S one revision? State your name.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening to everyone. My name is Pastor Marcel, Marcela Glover, and I'm the pastor of Clark Road Baptist Church. Blessings to all of you. Yes, I, I, I do. Thank you so much. I was waiting to, to, um, speak. And I thank you guys very much for what you all have done so far. This is our second time here, and there were some things that were given to us on the last time. And we got this new date for revisiting this. And we've been working on doing the things that has been requested of us to do. And we are very, um, whatever we are asked to do, whenever we, what do we ask, we want to make sure that we're in compliance, that we work along with you guys, because I do truly believe, working with, uh, Nana and the rest of y'all, Not a Mystery and the rest of you, all that, I do believe that you guys are working for us and that you do see this vision for us coming to pass, and that means a lot. We are part of the community, and the situation we have right there where we are kind of wedged in is not the greatest situation. Not the best situation. But I tell you this, I believe that it's a situation that we're going to be able to work through together, because I know the vision that God has given to me for the new church there.
Beautiful.
And, and I'm, whatever it is that we need to do, I pray that we continue to work together to achieve this. You all have given us some things this time that we, that we've been working on, and, and we brought those back, but I think, like you said, there's still some things regarding the, the, uh, fire marshal and some things about parking spaces as well as the emergency vehicles having access.
Yes, ma'am.
And coming, and I think that's one of the biggest issues. Uh, we did talk with, uh, and Nana has been working along with, Nana has been working along with us. And we've been going back to the drawing board and coming back, and, and so here we are now. I, I just, whatever you guys ask us to do, we, we're going to do it. We know it's going to take work on our part to get it done. And if you guys continue to do as you've been doing in the past, working along with us and, and have that same uh, drive for us to get it done, I know it's going to get done.
I think it will too. How many weeks do you think you need?
Well, I, I would like to, uh, based on what this last thing that's been given, we're going to go back and we're going to do that. There are some things about going to the, uh, to the owner, I think, of the property, making sure that this, I think, the loop coming around, I, I don't exactly, you know, know how that I, I do want some, I do want some clarification on that.
I think, yeah, Nana can.
Yeah, the loop that goes around, um, could it adjustment be made? And that, and this is something I could have spoken with Nana earlier, but we didn't, it didn't kind of come to mind until after our last conversation. The loop that's, that we're talking about that needs to go around the warehouse, could that possibly be that that loop can go around the church in between the existing, the building that's going to be there in the new church, could that loop be also looked at coming around that way and coming out? So, uh, instead of how we're looking at it now, it's just a question. You know, can we, and I don't know the dynamics of it, and, and a, a Reverend Gunn who does the, the drawings and stuff, she and her husband on the way, they had to work late and not here, but that's the thing that I want to ask of kind of looking at that, and also the things that you are asking us to work on. And, uh, the revisions, when would those things needed, those, the paperwork, they're dealing with the, um, the survey and all of that stuff? When are those documents be required?
I believe those are going to have to be submitted before we can pass this.
Okay.
So, November seventh, reasonable timeframe to get all of that done, because apparently it's a lot of, lot of footwork.
Yeah, it's going to be some, uh, it's going to be some.
That would give you two months, almost two months, more than two months.
Okay. All right, with that being said, and you guys, let us pull on you and pull on you and pull on you. Uh, I believe, I do believe that extension.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay.
I think, I think everybody up here is cheering for you.
Yes.
I believe it. I believe it. I believe it, eh? And I thank you guys.
Thank you.
So much, and it's good. Look at your faces. I can tell. Hey, man, I believe in you. I thank you all so much for what you've done so far. Uh, this truly has not been a, it's been, it's been a lot, but we are required to do the work because we believe in the vision. Thank you all so much for believing with us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this major S one revision? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this major S one revision? Okay, can I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ twenty-four dash zero six dash zero two major S one revision revising the site plan for church at thirty-five ninety-two Evans to Lock November seventh.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation for Dig South at twenty-three oh four William Few Parkway. This shows the location of the property on the west side of William Few Parkway. It is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, uh, the adjacent property. Uh, that should be noted, the adjacent property includes the quarry, so although it is RA zoned, it's not exactly in residential use. Uh, this shows the aerial of the site with the existing house. Um, you can see to the west, that is the Corion property. It is undeveloped, uh, this, for this portion of it. The only existing house, uh, in the immediate area is to the south, um, and that is essentially their garage there on the north side of the property. Uh, so the intent is for the applicants to run a site work and landscaping business from this property. Uh, they do have some equipment involved in that business, uh, skid steer, a mini skid steer, and then a truck and trailer to transport those. Essentially, they're asking permission to be able to keep that equipment on the site stored under an existing carport on the property when it's not out on job sites. Uh, it is intended, of course, to stay out on job sites the majority of the time, so this should be fairly occasional storage. Uh, and there is, um, existing tree cover and existing fence between the carport and the adjacent property that kind of helps screen that from view. Uh, overall, staff doesn't see any particular concerns with the, the limited storage of the equipment on this property, and we are recommending approval of the provisional home occupation.
Thank you. Cameron Logan, would you like to come forward and speak on behalf of this provisional home occupation? One in the audience like to speak in favor of this provisional home occupation? Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this provisional home occupation? Have a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for South at twenty-three oh four William Few Parkway.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries. Miss Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation for Hannah's Closet at thirty-three oh six Tom Bartles Road. This shows the location of the property on the west side of Tom Bartles Road, just north of Cobham Road, and it's also zoned RA residential agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. Uh, this shows the aerial of the site with the existing house and the existing accessory building. And you can see out, that accessory building outlined in red there on the site plan. Uh, the applicant of, offers laser engraved tumblers, wood gift items, and other products, as well as handmade jewelry. Uh, she's intending to use that shop building to create these items. Uh, she does most of her sales either online or at fairs or other venues, so there's limited traffic to the site that would be related to this business, and all of the work would take place in this accessory building, uh, which is well under the fifty percent limit for provisional home occupations. Uh, this shouldn't create any noise or traffic or other impacts to the adjacent property, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Renee and Gunner, Gary and Renee Gunner, would you like to come forward? On behalf of your provisional home occupation?
Sorry, y'all.
Good.
Um, yeah, so we started a few years ago kind of at our old property, um, doing some design things my daughter's and we wanted to focus on some certain things for special needs. Initially started with some funny little T-shirts, like if you look this good, I'd stare at you for people that are in her situation. Kind of expanded on that, um, added things from laser engraving and so on and so forth. I work full-time, so this is just part-time, so I work from home all the time. Um, but this is something we definitely want to make sure we're doing appropriately and following the processes.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this provisional home occupation? Can I get a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provision patient for Hannah's
All in favor? Carries? Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a major revision to the planned unit development at fifty ninety-five Washington Road. Uh, this shows the location of the property at the intersection of Washington Road and William Few Parkway. It is currently zoned planned unit development as part of the Riverwood PUD. This shows the aerial of the site before construction. If you've driven past it recently, it does not look like this right now. It looks more like this. Uh, so this is a gas station that is under construction, and the request tonight is in regards to the canopy signage for the proposed gas station. Uh, the PUD does not include specific standards for canopy signs, so they do fall back to county code requirements, which allows twelve square feet per side of the canopy that's visible from the road. Uh, so this shows the site plan. Essentially, three sides of that canopy are going to be visible from the roads. They could have a twelve-square-foot canopy sign on each of those three sides. They are requesting a larger signage with this, uh, variance requests. They are requesting thirty-nine square feet, uh, on two sides of the canopy. Uh, so you can see the, the proposed signs there on the canopy. Uh, the applicant's justification for this is to, uh, en- ensure that there's sufficient visibility for vehicle safety and traffic in this area. With their sign plan, you can see here, there are two freestanding signs, uh, the three signs on the building, and then the two proposed canopy signs as well, so there's a total of seven signs on the site. Uh, this is also a pretty prominent intersection. Uh, there's not much blocking the view here, especially with it being a, a recently cleared and developed site. Um, so staff doesn't find the argument convincing that they need larger canopy signs in order to make this gas station visible, uh, and staff is recommending disapproval of the request.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak on behalf of owners, Drake and Parker Companies? State your name and your address, please.
My name's Collins Corbett, Anchor Sign. We work for Parker's Kitchen, uh, twenty-two hundred Dishar Street, Charleston, South Carolina. Um, we're here tonight to discuss, I don't know if y'all have seen the full actual plans. I know they had portions of it. I have printed out copies. Um, the site itself, the front building sign itself that you can see, sign A, sits back approximately two hundred feet from the road edge. Um, so it's not very visible, especially as you're going up the hill to turn into that William Few Parkway area. Um, not very visible going in and being set that far back along with the whole canopy structure that's there that's blocking it. The twelve square feet that is allowed, um, look at the actual drawings themselves on how they are. The calculations for that twelve square feet also take into account the dead space from the top of the P to over the logo. Basically a box that encumbers it, so it's about fifteen square feet of blank calculated signage. Calculated into that thirty-nine square feet that's there. Only about twenty-three square feet total of, of viewable signage on each side that we're looking for. Um, not trying to get all three signs because we realized the one on the front elevation not really prominent with the left and right and less travel of traffic, but trying to get it where it is a more, a viewable safety for pedestrian, for auto and traffic coming in with that heavily trafficked area with the shopping center and all right there. Um, for everything, I know by code we're allowed William Few overlay, I think it's a hundred square feet, twenty-five percent. Come in right now with, uh, building and canopy signs as shown on here at two hundred square feet. They're trying to be a better partner with the community and decrease sign pollution. Um, we're still a hundred square feet under what we're allowed by code on it.
Seven signs on the site.
So there's three building signs. There's a freestanding sign at the curb cut on the backside of the property that has the fuel pricers in it. I have drawings in it. Those signs are mainly there for fuel pricing. The logos that are in those signs are ten-inch tall Parker's Kitchen, not, not very viewable until you're right up on it. They're basically there for pricing. I have separate drawings of those if you'd like to see what they look like.
Is that D and E?
Yes, sir. That is D and E.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor of this major PUD revision? Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this major PUD revision? I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend this approval of file RZ two-four dash oh nine on one major PUD revision for canopy sign five zero nine five Washington Road.
Second. All in favor? Carries?
I'm sure this request for rezoning, uh, for multiple properties on South Beller Road and Colonial Road, bond about two point eight six acres. Rezoning from R, R two and P one to CC Community Commercial with a conditional use for single-family residential. So those are the locations of the properties on the west side of South Beller Road, going basically from Colonial Road down to the Dunkin' Donuts down on the south side on Westmont Drive. This shows the zone, the zone of the properties themselves. Again, you do have two that are P one, and you have quite, quite a good mix of zoning in the area. You have some CC to the south. North, you have P one across the road up here on Colonial. Whoop, don't want that. Um, and across the street, we have some C two and C one. So again, a good mixture of zoning. We basically have all of the, the types of uses that could be on this corridor outside of that C two. That one's probably a little, little hard to have nowadays. Like, gives you an idea of the zoning, aerial view of the site. Again, we're dealing with these six properties here. And a plot of the property, uh, showing those properties from Colonial down to Westmont. And the sites themselves, again, starting on the north side at Colonial, then working our way down, uh, to the south end of the property. So this shows the concept plan, uh, and actually there is a revise. I wonder if we can go to that one, I believe is next. Yep. So we'll be talking about some, some variances, uh, upcoming to the base of the back, back here, uh, so that's not really for discussion at this point. This does show kind of what's being proposed on the property. You have a retail building on the north side, about six thousand square feet with a drive-through on it. Uh, that is part of, uh, some of the requests of the variances. Uh, one of the plans before showed a pond here. That pond is being moved to buyer retention at the back here. Then you have another retail building of five thousand square feet with a, with a drive-through, and also seven thousand square feet with a drive-through. Again, these are all basic retail structures. Um, no, no note on what, what, who's going to go in there, uh, but again, we have a pretty good idea of what they are. In terms of future development, kind of what we're, what we're dealing with is, is a professional corridor. Uh, so it does allow for a mixture of professional and also commercial development. Uh, one of the things with that is that it kind of has an upper limit of CC Community Commercial, uh, so that's what's being requested here. Uh, so that again, it's, you're, they're asking for the highest they could get essentially. Uh, one of the big things of that that we'll kind of go into with the, the variance is if you, it does state pretty clearly that CC is the highest you could, you can ask for. But also says, you know, hey, if you're asking for that, you know, be sure you have enough property, and you're not asking for buffer variances and those, those sorts of things that can impact others on the property themselves. You go back to the concept. So kind of with that in mind, uh, and also understanding that we have residential behind us, and also over here, we have a Dunkin' Donuts. The Dunkin' Donuts, when it was rezoned back in twenty fifteen, uh, had a condition regarding hours of operation. Uh, that was going from basically six AM to ten PM. Uh, we're having that same condition, uh, on this property. If you could go back to the development map, and then also to the next one. So the other thing too, the conditional uses, um, there's not really anything to review on that. Like, we don't really have a lot of requests for the conditional use side with the residential. Um, it's one that, as best I can tell, we never had, had a request for it. So it's one that we, it is allowed by code, but it doesn't really have anything to, to look at from our, our standpoint. Um, however, the African has requested five years on that, and then this would apply to the, all the properties. So basically, the idea there is that northern piece of property could be developed, and the rest of it could remain as residential and be in use, uh, in that, in that regard. Really no concerns there. Uh, we do have a five-year limit for that. Um, the Afghans actually requested that with their application as well. Uh, next up on that, we have a lighting plan showing readings of zero foot counts of western property lines, provided for review and approval. Again, this is more for make sure that you don't have an impact, uh, from your lighting plan on the residential properties on the back. And lastly, we have hours of operations, including pickup and dumpster on the site or any deliveries. Loads of hours between six AM and ten PM. Uh, just FYI, the African has requested, uh, some revision to these conditions. Uh, they'll be covering that with their side of the request. That concludes staff recommendation.
Thank you. And from the owners that would like to come forward and speak on behalf of this state your name and your address.
Taj Lakani, seven three oh three Malton Court. Um, project manager, Access Real Estate. Thank you very much for the opportunity to go forward. Um, not terribly too much more to add, just basically a, a question that we get a lot of times is to think, do you have any tenants that are lined up to come to this type of development? So, uh, right now, this is kind of what we think could come there, but we anticipate some visions to this layout. Um, and with respect to the tenants, we not have any committed tenants. Have a number of conversations going on. Um, but I will want to just state that we are cognizant of the character of the neighborhood, what is already there. We are definitely deliberate in what type of tenants and what type of tenant mix will be there. will be there. We're not a development company out of town and from Atlanta or Charlotte or New York. We're based right here in, uh, Columbia County. And I, I've lived in Columbia County most of my life, uh, from elementary school, graduated from Lakeside, went to Georgia and came back to Columbia County. I've lived here most of my life. Are certainly concerned about what we bring to this part of town and, um, we haven't done developments in Columbia County, but we have in Carolina and, um, none of our developments will have any tobacco use. We don't allow vape stores. We don't, sage parlors, tattoo parlors, liquor stores, none of that. We are concerned about having a good addition and goods and services that will really add to the character of the neighborhood. Should I speak to the request for the hours?
Hours of operation?
Yes, sir.
Might want to.
Yes, sir. So I had emailed Planning Commission requesting that, um, and just to explain that, you know, the thought processes, by way of analogy, uh, you had men, or, or staff had mentioned those hours of operation relative to what was approved to the south at Dunkin Donuts. And that development has about 92 foot of gap from one end of the building to the first residential house. So we contend that the, the amount of distance that will be there from our proposed building and to the first house is about 185 feet.
Much, 180?
185 feet, substantially more. 180 foot is half a football field. Uh, that, that's a, a significant amount of distance. In addition to that, we are, uh, willing to put a fence that is taller and, uh, denser than what is over there at Dunkin. Uh, we propose to increase density of the landscaping buffer that's already there. Um, we will restrict the hours for, uh, the dumpster pickups, uh, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. Will also be abiding by the zero foot candles, uh, lighting at the rear. Um, we would also ensure that i- if there is a drive-through, that they would use the most advanced noise cancelling technology, um, that would again, ensure that there is a, a substantial buffer there between the residential areas and the.
So the hours of operation, if, if that couldn't be changed, that would be a deal breaker. You would develop this property?
No, sir, not necessarily. It's just that we've had conversations with a number of tenants for whom it wouldn't be an issue and we have had conversations with a few that would want, uh, little added hours, uh, like just for example, like a- again, in that corridor, right? This would just be consistent with what's already in the corridor. Like Taco Bell has, they close their dining at around 10, but they have drive-through open until 1:00 and others on the weekends. Cookout has it nowadays. I think Wingstop is open until midnight. Crumble Cookies is open until midnight. Just a little added hours for that type of business.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Hi, just state your name and address, please.
I'm Charles Petrie. I live at 414 Parkway Drive in Mordecai. I grew up at 311 South Bel Air Road. Back then it was 2911 Bel Air Road. Uh, and we used to, could play in the street and somebody would just haul their car. Now, take your life in your hands checking your mail. So I think that the development of this is inevitable. Sooner the better. Uh, my, my mother lives there on and off, sister, and, uh, getting in and out of there. Traffic. I just can't imagine anybody wanting to, like, raise a family there like I was raised now, because it's a major highway. Corner from Evans all the way straight into Fort, Fort Eisenhower. And it's busy, it's going to stay busy and I think it'd be a good place to put businesses.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of this rezoning?
I'm Bob Lewis. I live at 731 Royal Springs Lane and, uh, full disclosure, I'm a real estate agent involved in this transaction. So if it is rezoned, I will be paid a commission, but I've been working with these folks since 2019 to help them sell their properties. So they have become more than clients, friends about their health and their wellbeing. Uh, Carol Chase, who lives in, uh, has the property 309 and 307. She, uh, talked to me the other day and said that she'd been in that house 53 years, uh, and she has been trying to get out of that house for about the last 15 of those years because of the development around her. So these days, when somebody in the family sells car, it means you got, you're getting ready to run over when you're, you're mail. And now, so, um, as we said, I think it's inevitable that it become a professional development or commercial development location. We, we have to consider obviously the needs of the community. I think the needs of the community in this case are better served by bringing goods and service that might actually make the neighborhood more walkable. Maybe people on the backside of this, they'll be able to walk to things that they couldn't go to because of what, uh, access real estate brings to that block and so forth. So I would urge you to approve this and to, and you to work with the developer to come up with a great mix of clients coming into these businesses and so forth. I live very nearby there. I go by there all the time and I would look forward to having some other food choices and other retail choices near me in that neighborhood.
Thank you. We got your email too earlier today. Thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file RZ 24-09-02. Rezoning from R2 and P1 to CC with a com- conditional use for a single family residential for properties. 303, 305, 307, 309, 311, South Bel Air Road and 102 Colonial Road.
All in favor? Motion carries? Butler?
Share us a request for a variance on the properties we, we, we just saw. Uh, again, currently zoned R2 and P1. Looking at variances, section 98, 139 buffers and screening, 98, 147 I through use provisions. Allow for a stormwater detention facility within a buffer, uh, for a drive-through closer than 50 feet to residential use and for a drive-through lanes within the street and the building. Shows properties in question. We've already seen them before. In the current zoning of the properties as well as surrounding properties. In the aerial view of the properties themselves, flat of the properties, light north, cool and south. Concept, oop, go ahead and say the concept plan. So what we're looking at, uh, we, we, with the, so we'll, we'll take them kind of in, in, in order as presented. So we have, the first thing that's really simple, we'll go ahead and get it out of the way, is there is a requirement with the drive-through that basically was between a, the building and the road over here. It's not supposed to be there. Um, in this situation, there's a ton of stacking room around this building. Um, so it's one that we're not really concerned about any kind of drive-throughs in the building and Colonial Road or frankly, South Bel Air Road either. But again, going off this concept, really no concerns there. The second part of that is the buffer request. So what they're asking for is not a reduction in the buffer itself. They're not reducing it down. It's supposed to be a 30-foot buffer. That's a buffer with, uh, basically a fence and plantings within it, 30 feet wide, has quite a, quite, quite a bit of stuff in it. But no reduction in that width. What we're looking to do is have a, allow a buyer retention pond to be within that buffer. Again, the code does not, does not allow you to have a stormwater facility within a buffer at all. When we say buyer retention, this does show where it's proposed to be and everything basically flows to that corner. Uh, there's already a stormwater pipe over there. Uh, what we're talking about when we say buyer retention, if you go to the next one, this is what, what they can kind of look like. This is an example of, these are a little smaller than this, but again, this is what, what a buyer retention facility looks like. You can make them look like a, a buffer. It is definitely possible. Uh, we do have a condition with this. Uh, we're, we're okay going, going in this direction. We have a condition that speaks to it. We're also having landscape architects involved, again, to basically coordinate with the engineer who designs the pond itself, with the landscape architect and then basically designs the landscaping around it so that it basically functions as a buffer, but also has a stormwater pond in it. And no one's really done it that way yet. We have plenty of buyer retention in the area. Uh, but again, a little different way going about it. We'd have a condition that kind of puts some, so, so some belts and suspenders on that. So the last part of this is on the back of the property, we have a setback for a drive-through. It's 50 feet. Uh, currently, uh, you have basically from 40 to 42 feet and a half is about the closest they get with this plan. But again, they're within it at multiple points, um, throughout the site. So it is something that, again, it's 42 feet at the end of the day, but again, like, like I alluded to with the, the, uh, rezoning recommendation, this corridor basis says you shouldn't be looking to have any reductions in your buffers. Because again, that's going to impact your neighbor's situation. And why you have that buffer itself is you, you could have a, a noisy, uh, noisy drive-through, that sort of thing. Now, modern ones are definitely quieter than they used to be. You don't have, you know, loud squawk, 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 squawk boxes anymore, but that is still in place. Uh, it's still there for a reason. So one of the things that, that we saw during review is that if you were to subdivide this property basically somewhere in here and have two lots, maybe even three, it actually reduces your landscape strip down to the 10-foot on the front. So basically you can move everything forward by 10 feet. That would then give you, all of your site would meet that 50-foot buffer requirement. So we do not see a reason to reduce the 50-foot buffer along that Western Property Line. Now, as I talked about before with the conditional use for residential, let's say that this is developed here, but then you have some houses over here that remain in place. Um, that buffer requirement for the, uh, for the drive-through is for the use. It doesn't care about the zoning. So if you have a property next door that's zoned C2, but has a conditional use for residence within it, you still have that 50-foot buffer. In order to basically mitigate any concerns there, we do have a condition regarding, uh, basically having a 20-foot structural buffer in place on that. So you can, basically you're, you're kind of handling everything in regards to that. So overall, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Again, the first one with the buffer, I let, let landscape architectural repair landscape plan. We don't have a typo on the second one. That should be CC, not C2. But again, that one we're adjacent to a property zone CC, conditional use for single family residential. That's where you have the 20-foot structural buffer and then along the Western Property Line, uh, no reduction in the 50-foot separation requirement for the drive-through is permitted. Includes staff recommendation.
Thank you. The owners for LLC like to come forward and speak on behalf of this? Name and address, please.
7303 Malton Court, project manager for Access Real Estate Partners.
Take your glasses. Sorry about that.
Yep, we're good with everything that.
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Would like to speak in favor of this variance of multiple sections? Anybody like to speak in opposition to this variance of multiple sections? Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file VA 24-09-04 variances to allow stormwater facility within the buffer, permit a drive-through between a building and a public road and per, and permit drive, uh, throes, drive-throughs closer than 50 feet to residential uses for the properties 303, 305, 307, 309 and 311, South Bel Air Road and 102 Colonial.
Second. All in favor?
Was that with conditions?
With conditions?
Yes, I said approval with conditions.
Just want to make sure. Thank you. Motion carries? Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a change of conditions at 601 Ponder Place Drive. This shows the location of the property on the north side of North Bel Air Road at the front of the Ponder Place, uh, office development. And this property is currently zoned P1 professional. Uh, that rezoning was approved back in 2013, um, with quite a few conditions and the request is to remove those conditions of, for the, the revised project. Uh, when this was rezoned, um, 2P1, it was combined into this larger parcel that we're dealing with now. Uh, the intent was to develop a single, a large multi-story office building on the site. Uh, the current applicants have a different vision for the property. They're intending to re-subdivide this and develop smaller offices. So a lot of the conditions, as we'll see, don't necessarily apply to that, uh, development pattern. Uh, this, this shows the area of the property. It is currently undeveloped. See that from the existing. Uh, so this was the previous concept plan, uh, that showed that three-story office building that was proposed, uh, so again, intended to be developed as one large parcel for the one large office. Uh, there were quite a few conditions adopted with this, uh, kind of going, I'm not going to go through them all individually, uh, but quite a few of these are now code requirements today, so they don't really need to be conditions. Uh, and some of them are, you know, specific to that proposed development pattern with the one large office building, so they won't apply to the, the development pattern that's planned by the applicants. Uh, traffic engineering's condition is still relevant, uh, but it has been downgraded to a comment because it's basically a code requirement anyway, so it doesn't really need to be a condition, although the applicants still have to meet it. Uh, so again, this is the proposed development plan. They are intending to re-subdivide this property into three parcels for smaller office developments and we'll see in a moment the variance request for the, the setback, um, on the, the property there at the back off Ponder Place Court. In terms of future development, um, this is in the Evans Activity Center. Uh, we're not changing the allowed uses on this property. It's staying zoned P1, so any medical or professional office type use, uh, is going to continue to be allowed here and that's very much in keeping with the Evans Town Center area. Uh, so it, the proposal, uh, doesn't change the compliance with the future development map. Uh, staff is recommending keeping one of the conditions, uh, requiring that the ground mounted signs be monument-based. Uh, that's the pattern that we prefer in Evans Town Center. That's also in keeping with what's in the remainder of the Ponder Place development. We are recommending keeping that one condition on this, but essentially removing the rest of them from this property. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Would Mr. Rhodes like to come forward and address? Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition of file RZ 24-0903, change of conditions, property at 601.
All in favor? Carries? Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to section 90-98 list of lot and structure requirements for the same property at 601 Ponder Place Drive. And this shows the location of the property at the front of the Ponder Place off North Bel Air Road and currently zoned P1, uh, professional and currently undeveloped. Different view of the existing site looking down Bel Air Road. And again, there was a previous concept plan on this property of, it did actually have variances approved as part of this concept plan, uh, but those variances were conditioned on the site being developed as one large parcel. Uh, so when they go to break it up as they are proposing into three parcels, those variances no longer apply. Uh, so as a result, um, they are requesting to remove that maximum front setback, um, again, from the individual parcels. Uh, so the main one that we're dealing with is the back parcel off Ponder Place Court. That is the one that is intended to be developed first. Uh, and the maximum front setback with a cul-de-sac lot, uh, does become challenging just because of the geometry of the lot. Uh, it becomes hard to, to really pull the building up close to the road when you're dealing with the, the curved road front and it's typically shorter than what you would see with a, a straight road section. Uh, additionally, because of the topography, their stormwater management pond is on that front corner. Water flows downhill, so it's just hard to move those. Uh, so because of those, uh, issues with this particular portion of the site, we don't have any, uh, concerns with removing that maximum front setback and allowing them to slide that building back a little bit from the cul-de-sac. Uh, the other portion of this, uh, is this access drive that they are proposing, uh, with their concept. Uh, that would also have a maximum front setback on it. And you can see because of kind of how the property lines are laid out and where that access point on Bel Air Road has been approved, uh, that access drive does have quite a bit of a curve to it. Uh, again, that makes pulling a building right up on, close to it much more challenging. It's not straight and we tend to build straight building walls for the most part. Uh, so we are also recommending that we go ahead and waive the maximum front setback requirement from that access drive. Uh, the front two lots do not have development plans yet, uh, so those two that front on Bel Air Road, um, and in some respects, they're set up to be able to comply with the maximum front setbacks. So we are not recommending waiving the, the maximum front setback for those two lots from North Bel Air Road or Ponder Place Drive. Uh, if, you know, once they have development plans for those sites, if they find they do need variances, they can of course come back through this process, but we're not recommending, uh, doing that at this time. The staff is recommending approval with the condition that the maximum front setback is removed only from Ponder Place Court and the Shared Service Drive.
Thank you. Owner and applicant like to come forward? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this variance of section 90-98? Anyone in the audience opposed to the variance? Anyone in the audience opposed to the variance? Can I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to file VA 24-09-03 variance to remove the maximum setbacks for the property at 601 Ponder Place Drive.
My second.
All in favor? Carries? Mr. Butler?
Chair, this is a request for a plan revision at 2226 Southland Drive on 0.25 acres. Zoned PRD, plan of development for a major plan revision to decrease the front building setback from 25 feet, 22 feet from the front property line. This is the location of the property back in Greenpoint. This is, I believe, phase three at this point. Two, okay. Phase two. This is the current zoning of the site. Again, all of this part of Greenpoint is zoned PRD. Does some RA kind of to the south and over on the east side there. Here's the early view of the property and the platte of the property and the existing site. So the issue overall is this little porch right here and the front setback. It's one that's a little embarrassing for everybody involved. We have, we'll keep moving on. So we have the approved plan for the site is what came in for the plan review. So we got the approved plan showing, you know, no porch on there. We got the building plan. Shows a porch. Get there on the side there. So we didn't put two and two together, the hey, there's a discrepancy here. And then on the as-built, when they went and built the house, the as-built came back and said, well, we got a problem. We're within that front building setback. That's why we're here. Again, it was one that, you know, staff missed it, applicant missed it. We're fixing it. That's why it's here at this point. In terms of, you know, impact on neighboring properties, this is a site aerial provided by the applicant. Kind of give you, this is on a corner, on a curve, excuse me. So again, you kind of have this nice flowing line there. So you have this kind of line that goes across the houses. Doesn't really impact anything with having a porch there. You know, a much larger view from the aerial. This is the property we're talking about here. But again, doesn't really impact the neighborhood in this situation. Due to that, staff recommends approval, requests to reduce the front building setback from 25 feet, 22 feet. Includes staff recommendation.
Thank you. Owners like to come forward? Hey?
My name is Dennis Underwood. I'm Vice President of Production. First of all, I'd like to offer an apology, apology to you, staff as well, for, on this home. There was a plot plan. I'm the one that responsible for out to the field. I went through the checklist. It was elevation H on error. List of options for the home, an elevation H listed on the plot plan and elevation H on the plans. I checked the box and I sent it out to the field. Missed the fact that the plot plan did not have a front porch on it. I think that the, kind of the ship is pulled for, as far as going back in time and fixing that issue stake early on. Moving forward in Greenpoint, well, I guess before we get to the moving forward formally, if we thought we were within certainly a foot and usually two feet of that back line, we would have done some type of check on the home to begin with. Lot. We didn't think of that. So again, on our part for doing that. Forward, we've put into place every home that we've built, not only in Columbia County, that we were going to do a foundation check prior to concrete being poured. And it's going to be something as simple for us as a survey is going to come out. Check the box before the concrete's poured. Put a sticker on our permit box, green means go, red means don't. And if it's a red sticker, then it's followed up with a phone call and a text message, email, passenger pigeon, way to say stop the concrete. So again, I do apologize for this specifically to our customer who purchased the home for, welcome to Columbia County. Builder got us in a position where we don't come in front of you guys. I have...
Thank you. Like a honest mistake. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this major plan revision? Motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ 24-05, or PRD, front setback at 25 feet, Southland Drive.
All in favor? Carries unanimously? Edwards?
So this is an application for a variance at 4,400 Riverwatch Parkway to eliminate a required fence in a buffer here on the property. This shows the location of the property near the intersections of Washington Road and Riverwatch and Columbia Industrial Watch. This shows the property is zoned C3, and that zoning district requires a buffer, a 40-foot buffer against the townhome residential property shown behind it in kind of the teal. And then also a 20-foot buffer against the CC property to the southeast of the parcel. This shows a platte for the property and the location. Important information here is to note this blue line kind of running across the slide near the rear of the property. Yep, illustrates a creek, and state waters have their own natural buffer that's affiliated with them. And that's going to be relevant to our applicant as he looks to remove the highlighted fence here on the concept plan from the required buffers, again, against that rear lot line as well as, in this case, the property lot line over here to the left of the plan. Again, the rear lot line, you saw that state water creek running along the rear property. That means that there's going to be an undisturbed natural buffer on both sides of that lot line, on the townhome residential parcel and this parcel that has to remain undisturbed. You can also see the 40-foot structural buffer line also still intact there on that lot line. Both of those things will still be in place regardless of the removal of the fence. Beyond that, in a second, we'll see a contour slide that kind of shows the existing site. And this is our contour concept plan as well as the topography map overlay on our GIS map that just shows there's a very significant slope from where the parcel was developed up close to the Riverwatch Parkway. As it goes down towards the rear lot line, it's a massive downslope. This development, it's going to be very hard for it to extend in that direction at all. So there's a very large geographic and very heavily vegetated separation between the parcel and that residential development. There's not any real concerns with eliminating the fence in that location. This shows, again, kind of a view towards the rear of the parcel. Those trees, you can see the site is mostly developed already, and those trees remain intact. You're not going to be able to see through those. So that largely addresses the concerns in that direction. Beyond that, when the property was rezoned to C3 in 2021, a condition was included that required, it basically prohibited outdoor storage on the site for any affiliated businesses. C3 typically would have the capability to host businesses like contractors' offices with storage. However, with that condition in place, it helps mitigate the adverse impact that C3 property might have on adjacent commercial properties, for example. In this case, that commercial property to the southeast. And so given that, you saw on the concept plan, both the 20-foot and 40-foot buffers are still going to be in place on those respective lot lines and planted to, you know, the density required by code. Basically, other than the elimination of the fence, they're going to be compliant buffers. Staff is recommending approval as well as including a reiteration of that same condition from the previous application, stating that no outdoor storage is allowed on this site in order to help mitigate, again, any adverse impact this application might have on adjacent properties as well.
Thank you. Owner and applicant Doug Edwards would like to come forward? Thank you. Questions? Any tenants yet? Do you have any tenants?
Yeah, I'm the property manager working with Doug. We asked for a good favorable zoning before we did the project so that we could have a wider variety of different tenants, not knowing what we would have. Got a beauty salon and a dance studio taking up 80% of the space. So far, we have one unit left. We didn't know which direction we were going to go. People wanted to do, the gentleman talked about vape shops and alcohol, and we were like, no. Down that route. Got a very nice, beautiful building. This gentleman did a great job with everything he said because I just went out and took pictures today, but you went out a couple of days ago. So, you know, I've got some more pictures that show that you do have a large drop at the back. Did put the fence up. You'd have to maintain it. They start falling down the hill. Plenty of natural buffers that are there. I don't really think it's necessary. And to be honest with you, when we had the site plan approved and didn't even know, didn't even notice the fence was on there, nor was a condition of the zoning till we looked at the site plan through.
I've actually, my office is directly across from yours, your building, and we watched it go up, and it's a nice, very nice building.
Been too slow, but it's...
All right. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this variance? Just state your name and address.
Charlie Kohler, and I live at 638 McKinney Court. And I own the building right next to his property on Riverwatch. And I just want to say that I've put a lot of effort into my own building, making it look really, really pretty. And I don't want a wood fence. I want, we talked before he started to do this, that we'd like to put up a real pretty fence in between, and I think it would just make it look so much better. So I'm just here to support him to have that happen.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this variance? Motion, please?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition of file VA 24-09-01, variance to remove structural element of the buffer required at 4,400.
All in favor? Carries? Do we have any legal matters? A county attorney driver?
No, we do not.
Have any staff and commissioner comments? Public comments and participation? And to get a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, I make a motion.
Second. Favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.